Mr. George Monroe, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Monroe.
Shall we pray? Hallelujah, my Father, again we thank you for this opportunity, Lord, that we gather here. Lord, we thank you for our mayor and our manager, our commissioners, Lord, that you'll be with them, Lord, that protect them at all times, and whatever decisions they have we made, Lord, that it will be the right decisions. I'll give you all the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe. Could we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Waringo.
Here.
Commissioner Turnquist.
Here.
Commissioner Markowski.
Here.
Mayor Galvin.
Here.
Commissioner Hood.
Here.
Vice Mayor Spataro.
Here.
Commissioner German.
Here.
Thank you. Before we get into the meat of the business this evening, I do have a couple of proclamations. The first is the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service. Now, where I service others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas the nation's mayors are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet city needs, and whereas AmeriCorps and SeniorCorps address the most pressing challenges facing our cities and nation from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century, and supporting veterans and military families, to preserving the environment and helping communities recover from natural disasters, and whereas national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve, and whereas national service participants serve in more than 70,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being, and whereas national service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve with both their direct service and by recruiting and managing millions of additional volunteers, and whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars, and whereas AmeriCorps members and SeniorCorps volunteers demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors, and whereas the Corporation for National Community Service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with mayors across the country to support the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service on April 9, 2013. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Stephen J. Galvin, Mayor of the City of Muskegon, do hereby proclaim April 9, 2013, as National Service Recognition Day, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our city, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities. So, after tonight, when you run into a volunteer, give him a hug. The second proclamation is on a more serious and somber note. This week, we recall the horrors of the catastrophe, the Shoah, which many of us have come to know as the Holocaust. Whereas 6 million Jews were sacrificed and affected by the Holocaust, and whereas aside from those who perished in the concentration camps, there were those who struggled and survived but suffered the loss of loved ones, and whereas our community should always remember the atrocities committed by the Nazis so that such horrors will never be repeated, and whereas for all of us, their death and the struggle symbolizes the courage and indestructible spirit of those striving for freedom, now therefore be it resolved that the City Commission urges our community to remain eternally vigilant against all tyranny, recognizing that tyranny provides a breeding ground for bigotry to flourish. A witness whereof I have set my hand to this document this ninth day of April, 2013, as the Mayor of the City of Muskegon. Let it never happen again. May we have the consent agenda, please?
......... Resolution to support Bike to Work Week, City Clerk, summary request to adopt the resolution proclaiming May 13 through the 17, 2013, as Bike to Work Week, and encourage citizens to participate. Staff recommendation to approve the resolution. 2013-2014 Healthcare and Wellness Program Finance, summary request. It is time to renew the city's healthcare coverage for the 2013-2014 plan year. Renewal premiums for the city's current healthcare program have come in at a 5.04% increase over the current year. Last year, we experienced a 7.9% increase, and in 2011-2012, the increase was 8.83%. In comparative terms, the rate increases moderate, as many employers are experiencing double, sharp double digits rate increases. Also, the city's healthcare costs remain well below the hard cap limits set by PA 152 and remain cost competitive with the standards set by EVIP for new hires. These are good independent indicators that the city's program is cost-effective. For 2013, 2012, 2013, the city will continue to pay the HRA deductible if the employee and spouse complete the four-step wellness initiative prior to April 30. Nonparticipants in the wellness program will continue to pay the first $500 for single, $1,000 for a double family of the deductible. Staff recommendation, authorize staff to execute documents with Priority Health to renew employee healthcare coverage for the coming year. Environmental program mowing and trash cleanup contracts for any economic development, summary request. The contract for mowing of lots and trash cleanup of public and private properties previously held by Earth Creations LLC expired on March 31, 2013. A request for bids was advertised and five companies placed bids. Earth Creations LLC of North Muskegon is the low bidder for a two-year agreement. Staff recommendation to approve a two-year contract with Earth Creations LLC and to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreements for the mowing of lots and trash removal on properties located within the city. 2013 Sodium Hypochlorite Water Treatment Chemical Bid, Public Works, summary request. Endorse the lowest responsible bidder received by the City of Holland from K.A. Steel to supply sodium hypochlorite to the, for the purchase of sodium hypochlorite for the water filtration plant. Staff recommendation, staff recommends endorsing the low bidder received by the City of Holland from K.A. Steel Chemicals for sodium hypochlorite for one year. Request to accept Pryne and Newhop as dredging consultant, Public Works, summary request. Authorize staff to hire Pryne and Newhop for design and construction consultation for dredging work to be done at Harshore Marina and Cottage Grove. Staff recommendation, authorize staff to hire Pryne and Newhop. Consideration of bids for Wickham Drive, Sherman to Glen, Engineering, summary request. Award the reconstruction of Wickham Drive from Sherman to Glen to Brenner Excavating out of Hopkins, since they were the lowest responsible bidder with a total bid price of $314,721.70. Furthermore, if approved, authorize staff to amend the 2012-2013 CIP and increase the budget amount to $350,000 for said project. Staff recommendation, award the contract to Brenner Excavating and authorize staff to amend the budgeted amount in the 2012-2013 CIP. City MDOT agreement for the reconstruction of Sherman Boulevard from Estes to Glenside, Engineering, summary request. Approve the contract with MDOT for the reconstruction of Sherman Boulevard between Estes and Glenside, and approve the resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign the contract. Staff recommendation, approve the contract and resolution authorizing the mayor and clerk to sign both.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard the consent agenda as presented. Are there any items you would like removed for further discussion before we vote on the agenda?
Just D.
Which one was that, Commissioner?
D.
D? Are there any others? If not, I would entertain a motion. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I would move that we adopt the consent agenda as read with the exception of item D dog.
It has been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Waringo, to accept the consent agenda as read minus item D. Any discussion? If not, vote, please.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
I'm motioning to approve item D, Environmental Program Mowing and Trash Cleanup Contract.
Wait for a second.
Second.
Okay. It has been moved by Commissioner Markowski and seconded by Commissioner Waringo to approve the two-year contract with Earth Creations LLC. Commissioner?
It's not so much who we're wording the contract to, but more about the contract itself. I just was looking for some clarification on the timeframe, as to whether there's a certain period of time during the year when this is completed, and exactly which properties fall under this contract. I wasn't getting the entire gist of that from the package information.
I'd ask Hope Mitchell to address those questions.
And I say that because I've been...
I think she's better suited for, yeah.
As it's now spring and things are being uncovered with all the snow...
Really, the contract is really for the whole year, but most of the work is done in the summertime, because obviously the growing season is during the summertime, and that's when we do the mowing, and but the trash pickup is throughout the year. But again, most of it's during the summertime. But I'll let Hope tell you.
Yep, the grass leaves, which the leaves are raked at anywhere where there's a primary principal structure, by complaint, and they cut the grass. But they'll still do the, like, trash put out on the terrace, they do that all year round. Problem was sometimes when the garbage's like in the backyard, it gets frozen to the ground in the wintertime, and we got a lot of complaints from property owners getting billed for partial cleanup, when they got a letter stating all of it needed to be cleaned up and the contractor couldn't get it all. So we try and nail them when there's no snow.
Well, for example, specifically outside of city operations, we've been looking at some cleanups this spring along the lakeshore. And so, for example, along Ryerson Creek, some of the properties that are just off the road, but not necessarily a yard, they're really just kind of riparian areas. Is that something that's going to fall into this contract? Because frankly, people dump TVs, tires, you name it, in a lot of places that aren't a city lot, they're just riparian area.
It would depend on if somebody calls it in. It's kind of, because the inspectors don't get out and wander.
Okay, so this is on a complaint-only basis, as opposed to here's all of city-owned property and we do a survey of it?
We don't do just city-owned property, do we? We do privately-owned property as well.
Okay. That answers my question?
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Since you're here, could you let everybody know what the yardway schedule is and how that's going to be going? Doesn't that, I mean, that's not started yet?
I think it started April 1st.
April 1st?
And usually it'll keep going till, possibly till the end of December, depending on snowfall.
Okay. So that's...
Using into December, or the first part of December, but it depends on when there's snowfalls.
So I've had a lot of questions about that, and I said, well, I think, you know, we always start in April, but I wasn't sure if we were starting April 1st or April 15, so I figured you'd know. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? If not, thank you, Hope. Anything else from the commission? The vote, please.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yeah.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Public hearing, please.
Request for an industrial facilities exemption certificate, Graphics House, Planning Economic Development, summary request. Pursuant to Public Act 198 of 1974, as amended, Graphics House Sports Promotions Incorporated has requested the issuance of an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate. The company will be investing $435,000 in personal property. The investment is expected to create up to three jobs. This qualifies them for a tax abatement of six years on personal property. Staff recommendation, approval of the resolution granting an industrial facilities exemption certificate for a term of six years for personal property.
Good evening, Mr. Francis.
Good evening. Graphics House moved into the city last year, and this will be their second IFT in the past few months. This is for a new printer investment that can create up to three jobs. We do have Candy Crane here tonight from Graphics House, and Duana Thompson from the city has met with him.
Okay. Good. I got lost there for a minute.
Oh, Candy Crane from Graphics House is here, and Duana Thompson from the city has met with him, if you have any questions.
Very good. Any comments or questions from the commission? Commissioner Hood?
Yes. I was looking at your employment information.
Duana, come up, please.
And I know that you are, that you are to go by affirmative action rules, and that you've talked with our affirmative action director. And I noticed that out of 49 employees, you only have one minority, and, but you do have 14 females, but one minority out of 48. And this is to create three jobs possibly in the future?
Yes.
Okay, so you strive towards equal opportunities, though?
We do. We just don't get too many applicants.
You're going to have to talk it to the mic.
I'm sorry. We do, we just have not received too many minority applicants recently.
By the way, Duana, are you in full compliance with a plan?
They are, they do have an affirmative action, equal opportunity plan with the city, and they are in compliance with us. I would let Candy tell you what they currently do in terms of recruitments and their recruiting sources, and she has agreed to, you know, that in the upcoming recruitments, that if she needs assistance, that we would work together to see if we can improve those numbers.
Sure. And of course, they are brand-new to the city as well.
Yes.
Coming before us in a whole new capacity, so. But Ms. Crane, do you want to perhaps add what your process and your project are going to be looking for?
Yes, we've expanded our, where we post our postings, but some of the jobs that we have are very highly technical and skilled jobs, and we actually interview from out of Muskegon and out of state. And we've expanded to Michigan Works and PrintIndustry.com, and we're just trying to get the best qualified candidates to come in for interviews.
Very good. Oh, by the way, do you happen to know somebody by the name of Chris Carter?
I do.
Yeah, we do, too. Commissioner?
He's still there.
So the three jobs that's possibly coming in the future, are those entry-level jobs or are they going to be high-skill jobs?
They will probably be entry-level sales positions.
Any other questions from the commission? Commissioners?
Yeah, that was essentially my question before, but do you have any partnerships with local agencies or institutions as far as training? If you're having high-skill positions that are going unapplied for by minorities or local folks, are you partnering with MCC or any of the other groups to kind of get our residents skilled in those jobs?
We have not.
So that's something that, you know, in my mind, I would suggest that you have the opportunity to expand upon, because clearly, we want as many people in Muskegon able to work in Muskegon as possible. Thank you.
We were just talking about you, Mr. Carter. Okay, where's that? Any other further questions? Are there any comments from the public during this portion of the public hearing? Anyone would like to make a comment or make a statement? If not, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved?
No. I'll second the motion to close the public hearing.
Okay. It has been moved to close the public hearing by Commissioner German and seconded by Vice Mayor Spataro. Any discussion? If not, vote, please.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yeah.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now we need a motion to approve the resolution granting an industrial facilities exemption certificate for a term of six years for personal property to Graphics House.
Ms. Waring? I would move that we approve the resolution granting the facilities exemption certificate as described.
Second.
It has been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Waringo, to approve the resolution granting an industrial facilities exemption certificate for a term of six years for personal property for Graphics House. Any discussion? Not vote, please.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, and good luck, Ms. Crane. We hope you have much success within the city. Thank you. New business, please.
Endorsement of Farmer's Market Relocation, City Manager, summary request. The Downtown Muskegon Development Corporation is requesting an endorsement from the City Commission to relocate the Farmer's Market to properties owned by the DMDC in the vicinity of Morris Avenue, Terrace Street, and Westard Avenue. Staff recommendation to approve the request.
Yeah. At the City Commission meeting, your work session last night, you had a presentation from the Downtown Muskegon Development Corporation, which was kind of the end of the trail, if you will, of a series of public meetings that the DMDC has had with the public and vendors of the Farmer's Market and the City Commission, and at this point, they're seeking the endorsement of relocation of Farmer's Market to the site described.
So in order to discuss, we need to have a motion?
Unless you want some presentation from people from the DMDC, but Commissioner Turnquist?
Mr. Turnquist?
I would move that we endorse the Farmer's Market relocation.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Turnquist and seconded by Commissioner Waringo to endorse the moving of the Farmer's Market. Discussion. Vice Mayor?
Well, I guess, since somebody else's hand went up, I'll go first. You know, I've been thinking about this long and hard, as this came forth publicly, and as many of you know, I haven't been really in favor of this process, and I think I need to explain that a little bit. 10 years ago, we looked at moving the market because there was a demand for land for new housing, and despite all the vacant lots people see around town, particularly downtown, the city actually owns very little land that's available to develop. And the Farmer's Market happens to be on one of the few sites the city actually controls. And so, we put together a group, we did a lot of research, they visited other markets, and we came up with what we thought at that time was a realistic budget, and we came up with some sites that we thought were appropriate, and we couldn't get the funding. Well, the housing market turned, and the pressure to find additional locations for home sites kind of went away, and so did this. And I will say that there was a willingness to make that move, even though at that point there was overwhelming opposition. My concern this time around initially was, based on things that were coming back to me secondhand, was that, was there a realistic budget? Were they willing to put the vendors first? And I had a number of concerns in that regard, and I will say happily that all those concerns in that regard that I have raised, I think have been answered, and answered well by the Downtown Muskegon Development Corporation as they've gone through this process. My one remaining reservation is, ultimately, I think that's a very attractive piece of property down the road for somebody who might want to do something higher and better, in the sense that it would potentially create more jobs, generate more tax revenue, but that'll be a bridge for a future commission to deal with when and if it ever happens. In the meantime, as I went through the various meetings, and I've been to four or five of them now, where we've heard, I think, a pretty good range of customers and neighbors and vendors, and one of the things that really strikes me, and I hadn't really thought about it until the meeting process started, is that the proposed site really is going to be much more accessible to a much larger percentage of this community. I know that currently, the market's in Angel and adjacent to Jackson Hill, and there are a number of neighbors who are able to walk, but it's hard not to notice there's not a single contiguous sidewalk linking, connecting a residential part of either of those neighborhoods to the market. Most of the people who do go to the market on foot are coming from Bayview Towers, and they have a very steep hill to navigate, and again, with no sidewalk. With the proposed location, even though it's about a block further away from Bayview Towers, it's level, and there's sidewalk. People will not have to be dodging cars if they want to walk to the market. The other thing that becomes obvious is that for people in reasonably good health, the market's now within walking distance of Hartford Terrace, Jefferson Towers, Nelson Place, Renaissance Place, the Artworks, and the Amazon. There are a much higher concentration of people, many of whom have transportation issues, who will be able to get to the market now where before probably couldn't. The new location is a half a block away from the bus station. Now, the Yubaz dot, I mean, there's not a bus stop at the market, and even if you wanted to take the bus, you'd have to take a minimum of one transfer to get there. And the current market really isn't accessible very well from public transportation. So, the proposed location makes anybody who's within a walking distance of a bus stop able to get to the market without having to transfer, which would really reduce the amount of travel time for those individuals. We've heard a lot about the parking, and having been a longtime customer of the market, I know that most of the time, I can't find parking in the paved area, I'm usually off in the back, and once in a while, if it's really busy, I'm over there by Green Acres Park, and it's not particularly a good place to park. It's uneven, if it's even on a day like today, you'd sink up to your ankles. Otherwise, it's dusty, and that's not the best soil, and I mean, it's certainly not anything you want to get on your produce. And you're still walking a considerable distance. And so when I look at the parking issue, to me, and I raised this last night, but the key thing isn't so far, how far away you might have to park, because I don't think most people are going to be parking any further away than they are now. They might have to cross the street, but they're not going to be parking any further away. But what they won't be doing is walking in mud. What they won't be doing is having to dodge cars, because they'll have sidewalk available to separate them from the vehicular traffic. And the other thing is, is that as long as this design takes into account the need for people to be able to get their vehicle up by a stall so they can load their car, if they bought a bushel of apples, or, you know, a bunch of watermelons, or any of those heavier, bigger items that people buy, then I think that issue will be much less of an issue than people seem to be making it out to be. Having looked at a number of parking surveys in Downtown Muskegon, I can categories, categorically say, there's one thing we're not lacking in, and that's parking. We have more than we'll ever need. So, I... So I think when you put all that together, particularly the commitment to build a vendor-designed market that works best for the vendors and the customers, that I've come to the point where I'm going to be supporting this resolution. And I would ask that the vendors get behind it. I know that some are in favor, some are opposed. But I think that we need to move forward as a community. I think we need to take this as an opportunity. And I think if we talk about the positives, the things that will be available that are not currently available, the advantages that don't exist at the current site as far as accessibility and so on, that this will be a successful move, and we'll have a market that's growing and healthy for another 50 years. So that's kind of my journey where I got to, where I feel that I can support this now. And I just wanted to share that with you and with my constituents. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other comments from commissioners? Commissioner Malkowski?
I've received a lot of feedback from folks. I've attended the two public meetings, at least the second half of them, one of the vendor meetings. And I've received a lot of emails and input from folks on the street, on Facebook. I've read M Live. So I've really taken a lot of viewpoints into consideration, and it took me quite a while to make my decision because I really wanted to make sure that until the very last moment, you know, anybody had the opportunity to present a viewpoint or a better idea. And I don't personally believe that this is the only idea or the only option that can make Muskegon successful. I think that there are a lot of ways in which we can grow and we can do great things. But I also think that this market gives us a few opportunities, and I really hope that we can take advantage of those. And a few of them are the fact that we have the opportunity to create a sustainable building development, something that not only showcases produce and products made or delivered by local folks, but also I'm going to charge the group, building the market, and making sure that it is in fact a sustainable development, that we are using sustainable materials, that we are using renewable energy, that we are making it a place that we can showcase for a variety of reasons. I also believe that it will be more accessible to those who are disabled, to those who are older and have less transport options. And I also want to make sure that we are using this, as many people have said it is, as a community space. And so I've been told, not only from visiting it, but from everybody who's spoken with me, that they feel that it's successful. It's one of the few places that people in our community go to regardless of who they surround themselves with, regardless of who they hang out with on other days. On Saturdays, everyone goes to the market. And so I really charge Muskegon with making sure that, as I believe, you know, this motion will pass, that we choose to surround ourselves with everyone in Muskegon, and that we choose to be open and consider ourselves to be overtly friendly. And I think that making this a space downtown is a way that we can begin to do that.
Thank you. Mr. German?
I share the same concerns when it comes to redeveloping the Downtown Muskegon. I'd like to see downtown move forward with economic development, growth, jobs, so businesses can prosper. And being a commissioner that believes in supporting businesses, move of the Farmer's Market on my behalf, kind of struggled with that, and I'm still struggling with that. Speaking with constituents and going to the meetings and listening to the farmers, a lot of them are undecided and see, and not sure if this would work. You have something in place that's actually working and generating revenue. And I think one of the biggest things is change. And if we can look forward to change, it would be good. My take on it is voting on this endorsement, and I think that we could have, you know, waited, but we want to move this issue on and try to get this out of the way. I would just like to say I am against moving the Farmer's Market for the reasons that you have a property and a Farmer's Market that's been working for years. I may be the only one voting no on this, but listening to the constituents, the farmers, and there's no guarantee. I like the plan. But I'm looking at the bigger picture and the future downtown. You know, it doesn't create jobs. It may get, you know, people there and to gather and congregate and, you know, to help grow this downtown. But it doesn't sustain the livability of the community when it comes to jobs and revenue and a tax base. So this is my reason for, that I'll be voting no on this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hood?
I'd just like to say that a lot of my constituents don't want the Farmer's Market. And if I thought that there was money to improve the Farmer's Market that we have, then I would also be voting no. But I feel that we deserve, as a community, something better than what we have now in a Farmer's Market. I don't think that we should have to go for lunch breaks and walk through the prickly, I don't know what you call them, but the little prickly things that get in your socks. I just feel that as a community, as a whole, we should embrace this new Farmer's Market and use it like we used the last one.
Thank you, Commissioner Hood. Any other input from the commissioners? Commissioner Turnquist?
I'd just like to echo that. I think this is an issue that's come before us that is not overwhelmingly being accepted. There's a lot of people who don't accept it, but I hope that once the decision is made, that we come together as a community and go together to improve our city.
Commissioner Wieringa?
I too favor moving the market. It took me quite a long time to come to that conclusion, and I talked with a lot of people. I just think that it's going to be a wonderful place for the community to get together. And I think that the energy that's going to be generated is going to be very exciting. So I'd favor it.
As I said last night, you know, ten years ago, we started this potential journey for a new market closer to or right in the hill area of downtown, adjacent to where the proposed market is now. And my whole emphasis was then and now for an improved facility that would showcase the market. I believe that this gives us an opportunity to elevate the importance of the market to a higher visibility, to a higher value, to really showcase the farmers, the vendors, a gathering spot for the community. And we have tried in the past to find those funds to either update or improve the current market, and most recently last year, those grants aren't available. There was a grant to try to get electricity and water into the second bank of stalls. Muskegon County Health Department, working with staff and Lori, I think, attempted to find granting for demonstration or teaching kitchen, but that grant would not cover those type of costs for the construction at the current facility. Now we have a new age and a new era of individuals that are willing to step up and put their money where their mouth is when it comes to the betterment of the community, to gift the community with a new star, a new Farmer's Market. For many years, we've been bemoaning the fact that we don't have the Hackleys, we don't have the Humes, we don't have the Nims. Now we do have individuals and organizations willing to step up and gift the people of the city of Muskegon something new. And this isn't the first time that they've put their money where their mouth is, to share, to put their resources into bettering the community. This will be a very visible one. I won't get into names yet because we got to do an endorsement. And the names will, you know, come out as we proceed. But I think we have more to be thankful for than to fear in this entire enterprise when you look at what we can gain. And again, this is no surprise. We've tried it twice before. Now we are given the gift of the means to make it come true. So I'm all for it. I too have heard from constituents on either side. But we have to take the best information we have available and go with our heart and our gut to make the final decision. Because ultimately, we're not going to get the total picture of all either 39,000 citizens, some who can't talk yet because they're still in the cradle, and we're not going to get a full and clear consensus immediately from farmers or vendors. It's an emotional issue. Opinions can change like the wind. So we look at the best information, the benefit of what we can achieve here, and the great gift. And I don't see that taking up those blocks and putting in a state-of-the-art Farmer's Market is going to be an impediment to downtown development because we have to get our heads out of the little box seeing downtown as just this area along Western Avenue from Terrace Street to perhaps Fourth. Because when I was a kid, downtown started, at least at Apple Avenue, to the waterfront, went down Lower Western to Anaconda and Iron Cable where my dad worked, and all the way down to Richards Park, where we used to be in Ripley's Believe It or Not for the most concentration of gas stations, you know, in one linear mile in the United States, and my dad would call up at 11 o'clock, "There's a gas war! It's 15 cents a gallon. Get your butt down there and fill up the car's yak pot." So... Will it be a catalyst? I don't know. There's no guarantees. Do I think it'll help? Oh, yeah, I really, really, really do. Just the excitement now. Just the newness now. Just the opportunity for all of us to coalesce around it and say, "Let's make it work." My two cents. We could go ahead and vote now, but I will allow for a minimal number of public comments, if anybody so wishes at this time, on the issue. The gentleman with the glasses back there, if you'd like to step up to the podium. You look familiar.
She looks funny being on this side of it, but...
You look good there.
Yeah. Okay, this is routine. Chris Carter, 9438. Can't remember, I believe I remember that. Got two folds here. First, it's a little off subject, but I'd like to congratulate the Michigan Water Rangers for making it to the NCAA finals. They had a good try, but unfortunately, we didn't take it home. Go Blue. Now, to the important thing. As everybody here knows, I'm a huge advocate of moving the Farmer's Market. I think it wasn't sustainable at its current location for a number of years. I know there were issues with the sediment there with the ground. So eventually, money was going to have to be put into the Farmer's Market, which we didn't possess here in the city. Not having looked at the city's financial situation, I don't think it's changed that dramatically where we can have put that type of funds into redoing the Farmer's Market. I think moving it downtown will add to economic development. When you speak of economic development, we also must speak of dollars spent. I think where our current location is, people don't look at this, but the amount of money we had to put into sustaining the roads going to the Farmer's Market because of the amount of trucks and traffic going down there, those streets weren't made for that kind of traffic. So now, not only do we save money as far as redoing those streets and having to keep those streets safe for residential neighborhoods, we won't have the problem of having all that traffic going down those residential streets. And that was one of the issues when the Farmer's Market first got, I don't know, redevelopment when they changed the street, or however you want to call that. But it changed the process of how farmers and everybody was getting down to the Farmer's Market. It disturbed that neighborhood. Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays mornings about 4:00 in the morning, they were awakened with trucks, heavy trucks going down their streets. I don't think that's good for a residential neighborhood. I don't think that's good for growth in a residential neighborhood. I don't know if I would want to live in a residential neighborhood three days a week I woke up at 4:00 in the morning, whether I want to or not. So that was one of the issues why we started this quest 10 years ago, to move the Farmer's Market. So I think that's one asset that will be good for this Farmer's Market. The other asset is, we've been looking for, heck, way before I was on the commission, for some type of market downtown. Now we have that market downtown with the Farmer's Market moving down there. We have a lot of low-income elderly people who live downtown. They can't get on a bus and drive all the way to Walmart, go to Myers to get their groceries, get the fresh food that they need. So this will be their market. Since we can't get Plums or Myers to build downtown, let's be a catalyst of ourselves to address those issues that have been in this community for 25 years. I think it's a good solution. I think with the new state-of-the-art Farmer's Market and with the ability to add fresh meat, I think that's a boom. How many Farmer's Markets have fresh meat? So let me close here and say that I think that this is wise for the commission to consider moving the Farmer's Market. I think it's a great boom for the city. I think it'll bring traffic to downtown. I think it'll bring dollars to downtown. And I think it'll bring a new light to the Muskegon, along with our water. Now we have a sustainable downtown Farmer's Market. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Any other members of the public that'd like to speak before the vote? Sir, Quincy.
Brian Quincy, 338 Yuba Street, Muskegon, Michigan. And I had my study last night, and so I felt like I shouldn't get up here and talk. But I just heard Mr. Carter, who was a neighbor and a friend of mine. And I just kind of want to rebut it. All right? As everybody knows, I'm not in favor of the move of the Farmer's Market. I feel like it's been the plan for a long time. And it was geared, when they moved the traffic and they moved the ability to get downtown easily, it was geared to... A lot of times in Muskegon, we feel like things happen behind closed doors. We feel like things get moved behind, with the movers and the shakers. And this has felt like it has been in the planning for a very, very long time. And whichever way that it was going to get done, it was going to get done. Now, I live on Yuba Street. I've never heard the trucks. That doesn't mean that some people don't. Some people are a lot of sleepers. I've never heard the trucks. And I don't fully understand how this Farmer's Market, a seasonal business, will flourish downtown, will be the jewel of downtown. I have yet to really materialize why the... I know that the conditions that the current market is in is because we don't have the money. I just have a hard time understanding why if people want to invest in downtown, and downtown could include the bottom of Yuba Street, why wouldn't they want to invest in making it more inclusive downtown than just moving the Farmer's Market over three blocks? It's thriving. It's a business, I mean, it's a business that the city has catered to and is working. It's a business that the city has catered to and is working with all the roadblocks, all the traffic, everything, but it's still working. You have to get the people to endorse the move. And I'm not sure if the people endorse the move. I don't feel it, as I talk, I don't feel it, that the people have to endorse the move. And I do not endorse the move, nor do I want it moved. And I want everybody to understand that. So when I say I'm probably not going to be down at the new farmer's market saying kumbaya, I'm not.
My name is Bob Larson. I live in Norton Shores. I sell occasionally at the flea market. And I'm very low-tech, so I'm not able to get on the computer, and so I don't know where the flea market plays into all of this. I attempted to attend one of the meetings at the Beardsley Theater, but it sort of deteriorated into an uncomfortable situation where I left early. And I don't feel, I feel that if it's not broke, don't fix it. You have a good thing there that attracts people from all over West Michigan. I know people from 90 miles away that come to sell at the flea market. And with all the issues that people from all walks of life have with it, overall, I think it's been a good thing. And I think it's a mistake to... And I don't understand why the decision has to be made before the market opens because you could really get a good feel for who you're dealing with and how they feel about it if you were to wait till the market opens for the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. I'll take one more statement. Sir, please.
William Springsteen, 271 Catawba. I grew up here in Muskegon. I've been to the farmer's market every weekend, go on Wednesdays. I love it. It's an atmosphere down there that I really truly believe if you move it, you're not going to have that atmosphere anymore. I mean, it's a feeling of camaraderie when you can go around people that you don't know, different ethics. You get a good feeling of people, and you see them every weekend in the same place. Like I said, I live at 271 Catawba. I see that there's private, I've been watching MLive, and they talk about private, people raising funds and things of that nature. I would just think, before you guys go and vote, I think maybe, like the gentleman just said, maybe we should wait till the market opens and go down there and really get a hold of the people and really get a feel for them. I hear a lot of people saying to constituents, I'm very active in my community, and I haven't heard anything about this unless I was on MLive. That's the only way I found out about it. I think there's other things that need more of your attention, like the crime break that's going on, the way Wood Street story is with all the people that's hanging out there. I have four young children, seven, nine, six, and three. I can't walk them up to the store, but I can take them to the farmer's market, no problem, never have to worry. So I think it's other things that's more concerning that we should worry about. We should put this on the back burner and get more input from the people that actually go to the market. Like the man said, they don't have internet connections. Some people don't do that. A lot of elderly people don't have their internet capability. So wait till the market opens, get their input as a hands-on, face-to-face, that way you might get the real and the gist of what's really going on. Just like the other man said, I won't be visiting downtown. I think it's taking away from community that you invested a lot into, and you're taking all these things that they have left. So with that, I leave you.
You've heard comments over the past several weeks, the participations in the different forums. So ladies and gentlemen, we'll take the vote.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
No.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Gawren?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We wish the DMDC best of luck in beginning the search for the finance. And to those individuals that feel you're being closed out, I hope that as the plan proceeds and it becomes a success, that we'll see you at the market on the days that we're down there. Because we have been talking to people that frequent the market. I frequent the market. My wife frequents the market. We have been doing this in a vacuum, and I know that not every decision that we make up here is going to appeal to or appease everyone. But what we need to do is, going forward, is make this the most fantastic project we possibly can for all of the Muskegonites. And I don't doubt that it will be. So, Mr. Quincy, I hope I see you down there next year if this is a success, like I would run into you in prior years or other individuals. Because it will be ours. It'll be a gift. And it'll continue to be ours a couple blocks over. But it'll still be the people's meeting place. And we'll still get great radishes from Visser Farms or whomever else. So I'm looking forward to working with everybody, both the proponents and the opponents, to move forward, to make a success out of this for the sake of the entire community. Steve, did you want to make a closing comment?
Steve Olson, 820 Oakmere, and the spokesperson on this project for the DMDC. Certainly on behalf of the DMDC, we want to thank the commissioners for their strong endorsement of the farmer's market move to this location. And I'm hoping that, and I'm hearing that, that this commission will rally behind this project and assist us, the DMDC, in making this a very successful farmer's market in this location. You know, and we championed this from the beginning, the DMDC, this is an economic development. There might be different opinions or different thoughts on that, but this fills in that eastern section of Western Avenue. And we think this project going in there, we know this project going in there will give us an opportunity to sell additional land on Western Avenue to further develop those locations and pay those taxes and have those employees work in the city of Muskegon. So this is going to be, over a period of time, going to be a win for the, not just the city of Muskegon, but the community. You know, and we have that bumper sticker that says, "Love Muskegon." You know, we have people in Norton Shores, North Muskegon, Fruitport, the entire community that says, "Love Muskegon." It doesn't say, "Love Norton Shores, love Fruitport, love Ravanna." It's, "Love Muskegon." You know, and this market is part of that love for Muskegon. And for the DMDC now, you know, you've endorsed it. We've got work to do. We've got fundraising to do. That fundraising starts now for us. Because without what we heard tonight, it would be very difficult to get those funds that we need to do this project. So, once again, on behalf of the DMDC and the community, because there's a lot of people I know that don't like change, I mentioned that to you last night. But there's a lot of people that are strongly, strongly supportive of this project. And so I applaud you as commissioners for making the decision that you did tonight. And the DMDC, we will not disappoint you. So a year from now, our goal is to turn this farmer's market over to you, your property, your market, to move forward with in our community. So once again, thank you very much.
Our new business, item B, please.
Set public hearing for the Brownfield Plan Amendment for the Brownfield Plan Amendment to find the tax and jurisdiction of the Brownfield Amendment, giving the opportunity to express their new recommendations regarding the public hearing. Amendment is for inclusion of property owned by Terrace Point Landing LLC, which is approximately eleven acres, located in the central district of Muskegon. Staff recommendation to approve the resolution on the Brownfield Development Authority met on April 9, 2013, and approve the Brownfield Plan Amendment, and recommends the approval of the Brownfield Plan Amendment to the Muskegon City Commission. In addition, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority recommends that the Muskegon City Commission set a public hearing on the Plan Amendment for May 14, 2013.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I would move that we adopt the attached resolution setting the public hearing for the amendment to the Brownfield Plan as described.
Thank you. It has been moved by the vice mayor, seconded by Commissioner Wieringel, to approve the resolution regarding the Brownfield Redevelopment Plan as described. Any discussion? Not vote, please.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski? Yes.
Mayor Gawren?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, everybody get out your homework. Last night, we began the process of reviewing and evaluating the request for proposals that we received, or the response to our request for proposals, from executive search agencies to help us in our search for a new city manager. I think as we left it last night, we were each charged with looking for our top three choices, I believe. Okay? So, in the interim, the city clerk has come up with a, I want to call it a balloting or a, okay, ballot shape of sort, that would perhaps aid us in our rankings, and she will Now, the choice of grading is one through three. So I suspect that we could, at this point, do our grading and then begin discussion After you're done ranking, we'll pass them down and we'll get a tally. How are we on this side here? And then failing all else, I brought a quarter.
Well, the good thing is, I think there's several there that will do a good job.
Oh, okay, good. Well, you know what I forgot to mention is, and I apologize for this because we usually do it at the beginning of the meeting, but we have John Crann, Public Policy Manager for Congressman Bill Heisinga in the audience tonight. Thank you for joining us. And, John, you said you grew up on a farm?
I did.
Yeah, whereabouts?
Um, near what?
Okay. And what crop or product?
Dairy.
Okay.
I grew up on dairy farm.
All right. Yeah, dairy has this amazing capacity to linger.
Commissioner Wilkins was here also.
Oh.
She must have left.
Okay. So when we see, when we see high-profile people and potentates, give me a nudge so we can recognize them as visiting.
I recognize that not everybody left.
Mr. Larson, how the heck are you?
Good.
Good.
This is my first commission meeting.
Oh, really? And how do I look?
Oh, great.
Oh, good, thanks.
Glad you're on TV.
I haven't run into you lately around town.
Well, I have to say, I have some big shoes to fill there.
Oh, okay.
Pass it on to Speaker.
Okay. Our highest ranking so far came Waters Group, followed by SGR, followed by Anchor HR Solutions. So what's your pleasure, Commissioner? You want to talk about these three? Vice Mayor?
Well, I guess, you know, we kind of talked these through yesterday. We had an opportunity to answer questions. I guess my only issue is, is there any compelling reason not to use the Waters Group? I mean, is there any one of us who thinks, "Oh, no, I didn't want that. I think they'd be terrible." And if there isn't, then, you know... But I think that would be my question. Is there anybody who thinks, I mean, that's a process we chose to go with yesterday? And if there's a compelling reason not to use them, I say we move forward in that direction. And that was not one on my list, but I'm okay with it.
Right. Commissioner Markowski?
I would just ask if we do have an issue that, you know, we might request, bring that up before we contract with them, so that we can request that it become part of their package. If there's something specific that we really liked about somebody else and it's not included in that proposal, there's no reason why we can't ask them if they are.
We could see that through our negotiation process. Commissioner Turnquist?
I would agree with Mr. Commissioner Spataro. The Waters Group was within my three, so it makes me even more comfortable. But consensus has spoken, and I think that's where we should begin.
People comfortable with that?
My only reservation was they had a really...
My only reservation was they had a really compressed timeframe, but, you know, as long as the agreement is they take what they need, time to do it right.
Right. And that our timeframe, right? And I think sometimes I think that that's a part of their marketing, to say, hey, we can do it hot, heavy, and fast, give you what you need.
A part of their guarantee was that we'll be here until they're finished.
Right.
Right. And I know that that was one of your, and I like that, I like that as well, too, and being here until the job is done.
Well, and we discussed, as I recall, one of the complaints was limited advertising, and so I think that that's something that we should bring up to them, and if we are requesting a certain breadth of advertising to make sure that we include all the candidates possible, that would let them know that.
Absolutely. So, what I would do is, as you re-review, if there are additional items or concerns that we can discuss with them at the time of negotiating the contract, that have those in hand, you know, and ready.
Now, will you be in touch with them reasonably soon? We want to be sure they're still interested.
We're going to pay them big money.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I had kind of a technical question. I mean, what's the next step? Do we need to make a motion to authorize city staff to negotiate an agreement with Waters Group, or what would be the appropriate next step?
That's what I think is, what I would suggest is to authorize the city staff to negotiate an agreement that is acceptable to the city manager and city attorney, and to further authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement.
I would make that motion.
I would second that.
It has been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Wieringo, to authorize staff and the city attorney to negotiate an acceptable agreement with the Waters Consulting Group Incorporated for the purpose of searching for a new city manager. Discussion? Vote, please.
Can you tell me the second?
Commissioner Wieringo.
Yeah. You want to read that back? That way, we're all on the same page.
What is to operate staff and city attorney to negotiate an agreement with Waters and operate with the mayor's assignment?
What is that?
Did you remember?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yeah.
Commissioner Wieringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galwin?
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Did you miss anything?
No. To the extent that someone has concerns they want to address, probably should notify Brian or I by email very quickly.
Okay.
This material should, is there any reason to?
You can do whatever you want.
Larry, can I have your copy on Waters?
Oh, that's, yeah.
I just need to one, the others are.
Give all the access to the attorney. Oh, no, don't do that. It might fall under billable hours. Forget it.
We did have, we did have the, I think, the discussion last night and the notes about some of the issues, and Commissioner Markowski brought up a couple things tonight that we discussed.
Right.
So, I think we have a pretty good understanding about the, some of the concerns that we can talk to them about, and I'm sure most companies have the flexibility to accommodate us.
Okay. Very good. Any other business before we go to public participation? Commissioner Markowski?
Well, only because it didn't quite fit directly into the resolution that we were making, but I would like to discuss and see if there's any need for some type of a motion in, should the farmer's market be successful and the funding raised for it to be moved downtown? I really feel that we should maintain the flea market where it currently is, and that we should be directing staff to work towards a plan for the flea market as well as for the current farmer's market downtown. I know many people have brought that up, but my understanding is that the flea market will not be able to be held in the new space due to space constraints. And I don't want to leave folks, you know, hanging with the idea of where will the flea market be next year. So, I really think we need to make that determination.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I, you know, I wouldn't have any problem with the resolution saying that the farmer's market's going to include the flea market as a component going forward, but I think that we really can't say what's going to fit on the proposed site until we actually have a final site plan. And so, it may be a little bit premature to say, we're definitely going to put, you know, that aspect of the current market at the existing site. That may be a good idea, but I just think maybe it's a little early. And remember, this all has to come through the planning commission process, and that's really where we're going to see nitty-gritties, we're going to see dimensions, we're going to see, you know, a specific count of actual parking spaces, the access lanes, how much space is there for the pop-up things that they were talking about. So, I share your concern, but I think it might be a little premature tonight to take action on that.
But I'm, as we're vetting this entire process, I think it would probably be a two-pronged focus, because there's, of course, staff appreciation for what happens in the best interest of the existing, you know, property.
Right. I just wanted to be clear that, and make sure that everyone was in agreement, that we are supportive of the flea market continuing.
Oh, absolutely. And, yeah, we need the flea market, and I think we can get that out very publicly, that, you know, the flea market is an asset, and they're not going to be the stepchild, you know, in any of this. I mean, it's, Vice Mayor?
Not only is it an asset, but if you remember from the manager's report, the one day of the flea market generates two-thirds of the revenue that the three days of the farmer's market does. We can't afford the damage to flea market. So, I mean, from my perspective, that is a key component to this being financially successful. And that's something that I certainly will, you know, we got the discussion yesterday about making sure the DMDC follows through on what they said they were going to do. I think that's a key piece of what we have to pay attention to.
Right. Anything else from the commission before I open up?
In regards to flea market, doesn't that open up the doors for a flea market more than one day?
It could.
And that could be really big.
Bigger than Tennessee?
Nashville.
So, okay, very good. Thank you. Public participation. Individuals that come forward, you are kept to three minutes, and as you approach, come to the podium, please give your name and address, and have at it. And I do have a request from William Blakeman. I haven't seen him at Walmart lately. We could go afterwards. I got to pick up a few things.
Oh, okay. William Blakeman, 3358 Wilcox Avenue.
Muskegon.
I have some concerns about Bluffton School. I read in the paper today that the superintendent is looking for appraisal, or he's getting appraisals of the property. And I also see that they have already got a grant to demolish the building, and it seems to me it's kind of backwards. They should get an appraisal of the building and then put it on the market, list it. But it seems like what they're doing is they are going to demolish the building, and they've deemed it blight, you know, or blight, I mean. And there are a lot of other buildings around this city that are more blight than Bluffton School. Now, I understand it's about money, too, but also with this grant, it was paired for removal of the General Plumbing Company down on Ottawa Street, which is blight. It's really blight. And how they can compare the two, or put the same buildings in that, in the same grant? And I, you know, I just don't understand. You look at the Bluffton area, and the school is certainly not blight. I would think that you could get, if you get an appraisal, find out how much it's worth, put it on the market, and I'm sure there would be somebody that would be interested in buying that with a building on there. Why take public funds to demolish a good building and then put the property up for And that's my question as to why the plumbing company down there, does somebody own that?
Yes.
Why don't they pay for the demolition of it? Or if we, why should public funds be paid for someone to demolish their building if they own it? And it's the same way, as I'm saying, with the school. Why are we going to demolish a perfectly good school before we haven't even put it on the market? We don't even know what it's worth.
When it comes to the question about the whys and wherefore's of the school building and how those determinations are made?
Yeah, yeah.
You really would have to address that to Superintendent Felsky and to the school board. All right? Because their determination came from their deliberations, and that's something we're not involved in. They're a totally, you know, separate governmental agency. As far-
But the city applied for the grant.
Well, could I jump in there?
Jump right in.
This has been an issue for a long time. See, schools by state law can build buildings wherever they want to with no regard to local zone. And so, when you have a school, that's usually a good thing. There's noise, there's traffic, but most people like having a school in the neighborhood. But when a building, because it's obsolete, or population, or whatever the many reasons, that buildings end up getting closed down, and there's been any number over the years, all the old elementary schools from years ago, some of them got converted into other things, a lot of them got torn down. Vanderlawn Schools no longer around, Frebel's sitting empty, and then most recently, there were Bluffton, Nims, and McLaughlin and Craig are now empty. And the problem is, is that oftentimes, the uses that are attractive for a school building are completely incompatible with the location. Now, that land down there is owned, single-family residential. So, there's a lot of uses that have been proposed for other empty school buildings in this city that are completely incompatible with a single-family residential area. So, where the city comes into play in all of this is, we have an obligation to protect the neighborhood from something being inappropriately placed there because it just happened to be the site of an old school building. And we've dealt with that at Frebel School, most recently, and publicly with the Craig School Building, and so on. And so, from that standpoint, just from my own personal opinion, if the building's not there, you take a lot of that temptation off the table. Now, the families, the property's owned, single-family residential, I can't believe that there's not going to be interested parties in developing that as a single-family residential, which with new housing would increase the tax base for the city and the school and the library and the college and the county, that, you know, people who could afford houses in that neighborhood, just like they do now, would probably be helping us considerably with income tax. And so, that would protect the property values and the quality of life in the immediate neighborhood, and help the taxing jurisdictions be able to pay the bills. So, there's an incentive there to make sure that these school buildings don't get turned into something that becomes harmful to the neighborhood. So, that's something I've been acutely aware of for a number of years. Now, as far as the particulars of this type of grant, the school building and all of that was part of that grant process. And so, that money was awarded based on the demolition of two specific buildings. And one of the reasons the city of Muskegon got money is that there were plans for redevelopment with those properties, because, like I just described, that can now be redeveloped, a single-family residential, and that was one of the criteria. They don't want something that's just going to be a vacant lot and not helping anybody going down the road. So, while we don't think of something like Bluffton School as blight, it can be very quickly, particularly if an inappropriate use goes in there. And as an old school building, given the error in which it's built, you know that there's asbestos in there, and you know there's lead paint in there. And so, there would be very expensive renovation costs. That's probably one of the, I mean, I don't know the engineering of it specifically, but I got to believe that's one of the reasons why it's going to cost that kind of money to take down. So, now, as far as a private building like General Plumbing Supply, we have a number of buildings like that, and the most egregious example I could think of is the old Anaconda, where the owner doesn't have the money to tear it down. We've condemned it, but that doesn't give them the resources suddenly to be able to demolish it. So, it's in the public's interest to get those kind of buildings demolished, and if we don't have the resources to do it, and the property owner doesn't have the resources to do it, but we have resources available to us from the state, then the community benefits, and then ultimately, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Manager, but we're, we'll build a cost of demolition to the property owner, and that will go on as a lien against the property. So, we do make an attempt to recover that cost. But in the meantime, anybody who's been down there can see that's a dangerous building, it's structurally unsound, if people get in there, the potential for somebody getting hurt is very high. So, that's why the state produces programs like that and encourages cities like ours to apply for that money so that we can improve the quality of our neighborhoods and get some of these properties developed in a way that's appropriate for the benefit of the community.
And in this case, the grant was very specific, and it, I believe the parameters were very specific.
It was primarily for blighting influences and to include economic development opportunities.
Uh-huh. So, very, very limited in scope, and this fit the bill, the state's bill.
Wow.
But as far as, again-
I hear what you're saying, but I'm also saying, what I don't understand is that if they found the value of the property, if they got a fair market value of the property and the school, if a school, a charter school, I know that's a dirty word, but public schools, but a charter school or some private school.
Again, you would have to direct that question specifically to the property owner, which is the school district. We can't answer the whys and wherefore's of that. They made their determination, they would be willing to, you know, give you the whys and wherefore's there. So, any one of your representatives on the school board or give Mr. Felsky a call and ask on how the determination was made.
Oh, I know it.
Okay.
I talk to them all the time.
Sure enough.
But I was just wondering what it was, how quick it was done, and the, I mean, some of the other neighborhood associations. I'm with the Beachwood Bluffton Association, and, you know, we're discussing this, too. We're not making any position or anything. We'd just like to have more information.
Sure.
And I know some of the other neighborhood associations were surprised that they deemed Bluffton blight when they're, you know, they're in the Nelson Neighborhoods and Jackson Hill Neighborhoods, and their schools have been there for years, you know? And there's other blight, and I, some of the people that I talk to, they're saying, you know, there's crime and drugs- you know, there's, there's, uh, crime and, and drugs and everything in my backyard, and we can't get the city to do anything about that.
Oh, we do, though. We, we, we do, and we do have our dangerous building program, so we are taking it down. Again, this was a limited scope grant, and it fit the bill. The school used us as, you know, fiduciary of sorts. The, again, the whys and wherefore's, if you see John out on your walks down there 'cause he's down there, you gotta peg him as deter, but it's not, it's not over, because they're going to be, from what I understand, assessing the status of each one of those properties.
Yeah, that's what-
But, but as far as any of the neighborhood associations feeling that they're, uh, left out, or, and we're not addressing anything, I, I take umbrage at that, and they ought to know better because of our track record working with neighborhood associations, our community policing program, um, our great success with our truancy, uh, program that has brought down the level of truance, helped bring down the level of truancies in the Muskegon Public Schools from, uh, two hundred or more chronic truance to fifty-four in the past year. But, but I'm saying it because you, because you brought it up, and, and there might be somebody-
That's disgusting.
Right. But, right, but, but again, and, and I've had those calls as well, and I have to remind people that, you know, sadly, through the decades, we do as best as we possibly can. It doesn't mean that we're not doing anything, and our staff, and our neighborhood associations, and our volunteer organizations, uh, and faith organizations do a bang-up job, uh, keeping this city, you know, together, better than a lot of municipalities throughout, uh, throughout Michigan.
Actually, in Boston, these were.
Oh, you're wonderful. But, but thanks, thanks for the comments. Commissioner Markowski.
Essentially, I mean, I, I brought up a similar point when we were first notified of this situation, and I think really what it comes down to, myself included, is if something matters to you, you have to be there when the decisions are being discussed. Um, and many people unfortunately don't take the time to learn about things until a decision has been made, and then they're frustrated at the decision that's been made. And so, people need to attend their school board meetings, and they need to get to know the people that represent them on the school board, and they need to hold them accountable regardless of their discussion, their decision, and understand why they made that decision. And it's the same with here. People need to come to meetings so that they understand the decisions that we make, and they can hold us accountable for them.
Well, I usually do.
You do, even at Walmart? We'll see you there.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Thank you. Any other comments? Ladies first? Uh, with the lady in the white sweater and the butterflies?
I'm Martha Bottomley at two three three seven Westwood, and I came to thank the city commission on behalf of Glenside, we're getting the street paved, we're so excited.
Thank you.
And I just wanna thank you, Steve, for coming to the neighborhood association meeting in, uh, November, and helping with the trees, Glensideers love their trees, and Byron was there too, and a special thank you to Mohammed Ashatell. I think he left, but that's okay. He has just been a real easy person to work with, uh, and the trees are down, and so now we're looking forward to new street and curbs and gutters.
And no water seeping into basements.
That's right. The neighbors are really excited, thank you.
Very good, thank you, Martha, thank you very much. Sir?
Hi, my name's Gary DeCamp, I live at four seventy-five West Webster. This is actually my first, uh, well, my third visit in front of the commission on streetlights, uh, that order the decorative streetlights on Western and Clay.
Yes.
And been trying, I, I don't know the avenue I have to pursue to get them turned back on. I've, I've tried to talk, I've talked to Mohammed, I've talked to consumers on numerous occasions, uh, as of late as yesterday, and what do I have to do? I, we talk about this farmer's market and really expanding this downtown area. Two years ago, we shut these lights off. And I've been trying religiously ever since to get them back on. How do I go about doing that? We, I went to Nelson Neighborhood, who let us, said that we could be a part of them. So, really, I'm waiting for prices from either, I don't know if this is city or consumers, I have to get some prices to get these lights back on. And-
If I could jump in there, um, you know, basically what, what the Heritage Village Association was asking was, could they use, um, their affiliation with Nelson for Nelson Neighborhood Improvement Association to be the fiduciary, uh, to pay the city for the cost of operating those lights? The city did not pay for those lights. They were paid for by the Muskegon Heritage Association, and they said they were no longer gonna pay the bill. And we couldn't afford that, to do special lights for one small area and, you know, when we're taking lights out in other parts of the city. So, the city made an offer to the neighbors that if there was another funding source identified that would be willing to step in, basically under the same agreement that was with the-
Sir, your-
Muskegon Heritage Association, that we would be willing to, to be in favor of that. Now, at the last, um, Nelson Neighborhood Improvement Association meeting, uh, your neighbors, Terry McAllister and Bill Wright and a couple others, made that presentation to the Board of the Nelson Neighborhood Improvement Association, and the Board voted a resolution to support that. So, now, I would direct you to talk to Bill and Terry and see where they are in that process. You know, the neighborhood association's on board, um, so at this point, you know, that, that process is moving forward, but where it is and what needs to be done yet, I, I, I would direct you to Bill Wright and, and Terry McAllister, is the two who-
That's the same, that's the same direction I had, uh, probably a year ago.
Right, well, that's where they are. That, they came to our, they came to our March meeting, and-
So, that's recent.
And the, and the, and the neighborhood association voted to, uh, to support that request. And so, if you need an update on where they are, I can only direct you to talk to the two of them. They're the ones who've been front and center on this to the city and to the neighborhood association, and they're the ones who feel that they're in a, you know, they're trying to locate, well, where would the funding come from? So-
Well, I can assure you, I've, I've logged a lot of calls.
Okay.
Okay.
But, but those two of your neighbors have been front and center, that's who I would direct you to.
And I've been in contact with them, but probably not as late.
What, what else I can offer you is the largesse of the city manager suggested that if you, uh, contact him, uh, he can give a clearer picture of some of the mechanics of moving forward as well.
The last response I had from Mr. Brack from Consumers, he said there might have to be some separate metering, he had to check on the legalities of it.
Mr. Brack from Consumers Energy.
Correct.
Right.
Correct. Uh, I've had several discussions and still waiting to return call, so, I wasn't aware of Terry, outside of, a year ago we talked, I was here a year ago, and I can't seem to get that ball rolling to get this taken care of.
They've been working on it, so you might wanna touch base to make sure you're not both working parallel to each other and combine your efforts.
Because they had, it was just last month that, you know, the neighborhood associa- uh, NIM, Nelson Neighborhood Improvement Association moved in a supportive direction. And these are one of these bugaboos where you find these odd situations where they ain't our lights and they ain't consumers, and they were, you know, and they, they're, they were owned outright by a private entity.
And, and I, and I've got all that documentation.
Right.
Believe me, I've got all that. And I've also got what we, what they, they used to pay to, to light them lights.
Right.
I just got one further question. Who pays for the, all the lights downtown?
We do.
I'm just, just curious, because about the time we put them in, we darken the other ones, so I just, just wondered.
And I would point out in residential areas, which Fourth to Ninth Street are, from Clay South is residential, we only use, uh, streetlights at traffic hazard areas, primarily intersections. And areas where they've been added mid-block and other locations throughout the city, because of the expense of the lights, our, our rates have just, I mean, people just get mind-boggled when we tell them how much we have to pay for those lights. We've been removing them from areas all over the city because we can't afford to keep them on. So, that's why when they were, here they are, you pay for them, we had to say, I'm sorry, we can't. And that's why we're trying to work out with this, with your neighbors, basically, a means of going back to the previous system with the funding for those, keeping those lights lit, coming from non-city sources.
And that's what I've been trying to do for a year and a half, so.
Right.
I just wanna remind you that, uh, there's a tourist attraction across from my house. The people come and go all the time. And we're talking about putting a farmer's market downtown, and I appreciate that because, believe me, I'm a proponent of that, I am. But I also wanted about Hackley Hume House across the street, too.
Oh, absolutely.
So, I just, I, I just wanna push Wright above to get them turned back on.
Right, absolutely, but again, I, I have to reiterate.
I got you.
They weren't ours, and the decision to turn them off was not ours because we did not own them, you know?
I thought it was.
No.
But didn't the city decide to turn them off?
No, they asked us to take over funding, and we said we're not gonna take over funding.
Same, same thing.
Well, no, not really.
No, it's not same thing, because they're not, they were not ours, and we were already, we're already paying for the lights that-
I understand, I understand.
You know, the other, the other ones.
Okay.
It's okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, if, uh, if you hang for a couple of minutes, Mr. Muzade will, uh, would like to touch base with you. Any other comments? Sir?
Can I just mention something about lights before he-
Let's see him first.
William Springs at two seventy-one Catawba, I was a little nervous earlier, first time. Um, my biggest reason I'm here is, um, like I said, I live on Catawba, between Wood Street Store and the store on Third Street.
Okay.
Like I said, um, every time I go to the store, going around there, 'cause it's the closest stores to you, and a lot of people that don't have vehicles, um, it's bad up there. I mean, we need some kinda help inside, that, that, especially in my neighborhood. I mean, like I said, when I go to the store, I have to have my kids in their car, you're scared to go stop at the store. I mean, that's the only place that we have to go in our community. I hear that people, like I said earlier about, like, the farmer's market and everything, we want people on walking distance, like, you know, we don't have grocery stores in our area. We have nothing, I mean, is there anything that we can do to get help from you guys, um, whatever I can do to try to make, change things? I mean, we have a lot of illegal activity going on at Wood Street that people know about at all times. Um, like, say, so, um, selling single cigarettes, that's a ha- health hazard, and plus, it can, more people come to the store and hang out there because they get single cigarettes, plus you can get your weed, and you get your drugs. I mean, I just, is there anything, any kind of grants we could get?
Absolutely, and one of the, one of the first places is right, right on the beat, and that is to get ahold of your, uh, community officer and begin those communications at that level. And, uh, in each one of the neighborhood associations, a community officer is assigned to that area. I think you probably, what side of the street are you? You're in McLaughlin. Um, so, a, and you can find out who the community officer is by, you know, during business hours, even just give a call down to the, uh, Police Department, and they can put you in. Right, and contact Sergeant Baker.
Well, I mean, I gotta understand, like, the channels, but at the same time, like, you guys are aware of the situation, if you ride down Wood Street, you see things like that that's going on, shouldn't it be more of a, a push, instead of just being one person trying to get things going when everyone sees it collectively? And like, your farmer's market, if you really think about it, if you have all these problems going on in the inner city, it's gonna, that's gonna fall over into your downtown market.
Well, and, and, and there, and there's no doubt that there's harder-hit neighborhoods than others. Uh, part of the issue is getting people to, you know, speak up and call nine-one-one and report things, and not wait till a week or a month later to go to a neighborhood association and say, "How come you guys weren't doing this?" Well, there, 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 you know, sadly, there isn't a beat cop at every street corner in the worst neighborhoods. Now, they're coming up with new initiatives to help address these hardest-part areas, but a great place to start is to get a relationship with the community officer and start talking out and giving your input so that you and others that are aware of these things start shining a light. Now, we know that there's, that's a problem area, but you, you shine a light on it by communicating.
Well, see, I can, um, last weekend, my house was, uh, broken into, back door and my side door was kicked in.
Oh, I saw that in the paper.
So, yeah, no, I, mine wasn't in there.
Wasn't it?
No, it might be in Catawba, but-
Okay.
But, um, when it happened, my neighbors, we're, we only got like four people, we all in our homes, all right, older people. My neighbor, she's eighty years old, she couldn't get to the phone in time. When I got home, I missed, she said I missed her by two minutes. When I called the police, it took over thirty-five minutes to order them to come to my house. We told them that they were running down that alley at that point in time. Now, myself, I'm a CCW holder. Now, this put me in a strange position, 'cause I know these people running down the street with one of my TVs when they came to my house. So, I understand what you're saying, going through the right channels, but when you do that, people feel like I feel, once you've been a victim and you try to, you, um, contact your police and they're not there. See, this is an ongoing problem that we've always had in our community.
Okay.
You know, they're always there, it seems like, when nobody needs them, but then when you really need them, it's like, wow, where, where are they at? You know, and, I mean, I see them all day long, you'd be around Wood Street, things like that, they just ride by, you might brush them off for a second. I mean, I understand, like, New York City, they had this big thing where the stop and frisk, I really believe that should be brought, that should be implemented in sometime, in certain situations, like in Muskegon County right now, the city is Heights and Downtown. I mean, it should be National Guard, I feel, should come in because this problem's only gonna get worse. And, like I said, and the responding time for police to get to where you need them at that point in time, it's, it's, it's a big gap in there.
With those type of concerns, I, tomorrow, I would really suggest getting ahold of Sergeant Baker and, and share these concerns and the information, and that's how we will continue to do a better job, is communicating with, with our citizens, our neighbors, and, uh, and, and moving forward. It, it's, it's all a process, and sadly, sometimes very long and laborious, but-
I heard you say something about truancy. You said that truancy, um, breaks the drop, but when you go by Wood Street, you don't think they have, you would never think that.
Uh-huh.
You know, 'cause, I mean, I, I work at home, so my kids, when they're at school, I'll go at home, I go to the store and stuff, and you got ten, fifteen of them standing right there.
Nine-one-one.
Yeah, but there, the officers are riding around. See, that's the thing.
Right.
See, it's easy to say nine-one, but it's other problems go along with it.
I, 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 I under, I understand it, 'cause I run into certain things, too, and there's always room for improvement, and there always will be. Let's start, start with there. Okay?
If I could jump in on that, 'cause the Wood Street Market's been a pet peeve of mine for a long time, 'cause it is a huge blight on the neighborhood, and they do, I mean, we have had different processes with the Police Department try to deal with that, but the fact is, when we try to go and say, "Don't reissue a liquor license," or to use our nuisance business ordinance, we don't have enough people filing police reports to be able to document what a problem it really is. And that's very frustrating.
I can understand, but-
Because we know it's a problem, but when you're dealing with the State Liquor Control Commission, which really has the ultimate ability to get these owners' attention, we ain't, we need a raft of, of police reports and, and hopefully arrests showing this particular location is the source of that problem, and then we can take action like we did with the Mason Street Market. And what we did with the Mason Street Market, our neighborhood association, we made a commitment, spearheaded by the people within about a block and a half of that building, that every time something was seen that was inappropriate, they called nine-one-one every single time. And that gave this body the ammunition, we needed to do something about that. I think you were the committee officer when that was going on, weren't you, Commissioner Hood? Or thereabouts? So, I mean, that's what it takes. We, we, we need to work together.
But I see, I notice from your, your meetings, you don't even have enough people to show up here, so, I mean, getting community involved, it seem like it's hard, so, something like that. I mean, you could use a videotape setup surveillance, and this is what we see, this is what we know what's going on, you know, the illegal activity, I mean, 'cause, I mean, you have the red tape you have to go through, but there's ways around things, too.
Up to, up to a point, you'd be surprised how we're hamstrung by the law to protect the people that you don't think need protecting.
They, they need protecting, but-
But I, I understand. But start with that, start with that tomorrow, okay? All right?
All right, thanks a lot.
You're welcome. Commissioner Markowski?
Um, well, I'll start with this, since he's spoken this recently, but I think it's, it is well-known that the Wood Street Market is an issue. Um, what is not well-known, frankly, is the best solution for dealing with it. And I applaud you for coming forward and saying it's an issue. I live nearby, there are dangerous people making dangerous decisions on my corner. If you could rouse your neighbors to do the same, we would all be very happy, because unfortunately, um, what I've seen time and time again is people complain, um, but they don't complain through the channels that they need to complain through. And it might be a pain to have to call someone that you don't think is listening, but if we don't have that, then we can never say that you called. We can never use that as ammunition to make decisions through this process to get something done. And I think there are possibly other, other processes or other solutions on a community level, um, and I would encourage you to, to get with your neighbors or any of us outside of that, if you have suggestions, but really, people coming to a place, the school board, you know, as, as we discussed with the other gentleman, when people have issues and concerns, it's what helps us make decisions and get things done. On the streetlights, I just wanted to mention real quick that, um, in general, I am, have not been a fan of the way consumers is maintaining our traffic lights, or, or streetlights, not the, the signals, but the- our traffic lights, or our streetlights, not the signals, but the-
You've been sitting next to Larry Tudor.
Well, no, I've driven around town.
No, no, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
I've driven around town, and I've only got about a fourth of the city done, but I've, I've been making a list of ones that don't work, or ones that don't turn on, until I drive underneath them.
And calling them into consumers.
I really encourage people to do the same. If you see a streetlight that's not on, a streetlight provides somewhat of an element of safety. It's somewhere where if you see activity occurring, you can identify the person. You can't identify someone who's stealing your TV. If it's so dark, you can't see them.
Right. But even more effective, remember, turn on your porch light.
That, too.
Okay. Anything else before we pause for the cause? If not, Commissioner Hood?
I move to adjourn.
It has been moved by Commissioner Hood, seconded by Commissioner German, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay, let's boogie.